Alrighty folks, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting for Thursday, May 16th. We are being recorded and if anybody else in the audience is recording as well, if they could please let the Chair, myself, know that. To begin the meeting, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I think that we go into the executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21, to conduct elective bargaining sessions or to contract negotiations with non-union personnel, which is high school principal, and Mass. Chong Lao, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, which is the approval of executive session minutes of five, nine, twenty-four, and to return to open session.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Just wanted, for any members of the audience who might be here, can we have an estimated time that we may be in executive session for?
Fifteen minutes, maybe? Chops?
Yeah, just an estimate, just for the public who are here. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Thank you, we'll be back as soon as we can. We are back, thank you for bearing with us. So next on the agenda... Where are we? Okay. Next on the agenda, public participation, if anybody in the audience wishes to speak, if you could... Sir, if you could give us your name and what town you're from?
Hi, my name is Pat Airey, I'm from Halifax, Mass. I speak for a living, but the matter I'd like to talk to you about is pretty complicated, and I wanted to make sure I was clearly communicating to everyone here about matters that involve my family and son over the last full calendar year. So, there's three specific areas I wanted to talk to you about. The ongoing failure of providing a safe learning environment for our son, Jack Airey, at Silver Lake, the effect it has had on our child and our family over the course of a full year, and recent retaliatory responses by your administration on my child. We've been dealing with what we thought was bullying since the end of last year. What we've learned through several investigations, outside input, and from Principal Coet, is that bullying basically doesn't exist in the Silver Lake school system. The direct quote from Principal Coet was, "There's only been one formal case of bullying during her tenure." I have provided you as a committee dozens of documents, including email chains and investigation reports. There's got to be thirty pages of documentation. We have been told there have been investigations by the superintendent, the board, into Silver Lake Middle School investigative processes, however, it received no outcome to either of them. Any of our own push into the details of specific Silver Lake Middle School investigations has yielded inconsistent response in details of parties involved. Even the presentation of where a teacher was in relation to our son during an assault was misrepresented to us and affirmed when we got the opportunity to speak directly with that teacher. The process has been handled haphazardly, and now we're at a point where our son is being targeted by staff. When Jack first let us in and shared his being bullied at school, we were quick to engage Silver Lake Middle School. Jack was incredibly reluctant, stating he knew it wouldn't help, he would be labeled a snitch and outcast, and the teachers and administrators would turn against him. Sadly, he was right, and all of this came through damaging his trust, both with me and my wife Nicole, and our ability to protect him. When we found, what we found fast was Silver Lake Middle School was not forthcoming with process or actions that were voluntarily required, and the subsequent downstream implications were such. It's difficult to make informed decisions if those controlling the public process are unwilling or ignorant to the need in sharing such information with a parent dealing in crisis. This particular instance was the second. It was mediated, however, shortly thereafter, more instances started to occur, to a point that led to spiraling anxiety, sleepless nights, and eventually, full self-harm of Jack. The self-harm was documented by the school, by the way, that is very present on his body. I'm talking, he was afraid to go to school on Monday, starting on Saturday night. The situation of bullying became like a whack-a-mole. New groups of kids would pop up daily and weekly to harass him physically, emotionally, and mentally. His status evolved to an outcast or a pariah in the student body. The school entertained our correspondence, however, no plan to help Jack rejoin the student community or take steps to look after his well-being going forward were taken. In fact, the first time it seemed a reintroduction process should be initiated was when my wife Nicole proactively brought it up. And sure, we had documents called safety plans written for very specific antagonists and specific actions, but that was the extent. It was also unclear and often proven that classroom teachers weren't aware of what was happening, documented for their role to oversee a safe learning environment for all kids, particularly those with documented ongoing problems. The bullying investigations have yielded nothing of substance other than a tremendous weight on emotions and a large time commitment by myself and others in your staff. Jack was, however, implicated recently in an inappropriate touching incident, where he briefly tapped a student on the lower back during lunch, busy lunch. A tremor in the middle of a teacher, whom was one of five, in a full lunch, was able to see such a quick, brief, and harmless action, and immediately alerted Principal Coet and watched him to the U.C. Oddly enough, a teacher overseeing a smaller group in similar proximity for a different incident was unable to see Jack assaulted twice by two separate students. Most recently, Jack has been implicated in a graffiti incident. We had heard from another kid interviewed, and they have shared how Vice Principal Rothmich and Principal Coet have been leading and damning about Jack's character or role, despite the kids disagreeing with the actions they said he did. It's been remarkable in the difference between these last two investigations. The first, there were videos presented on screens and printouts ready to go, even naming other students involved. The recent one had videos and printouts, however, none of them was proactively shown or responded to. They have also refused to share names or any details, which again, there are details shared, but it's been very inconsistent. Make no mistake, Nicole and I are objective parents, our kid isn't perfect, he's painy. We stand by his word. A significant part of that belief and stance is founded in the fact that he's been accurate to date on everything that's happened and how it's unfolded. To the best of our knowledge, Jack hasn't had no prior disciplinary issues with the school until the last couple of months. He's gone through a terrible year, and we have advocated fiercely on his behalf. It's odd that now, for the first time ever, he's been implicated in uncharacteristic disciplinary investigations. One could see a high degree of correlation here, or even draw a causation. It's a tragic period of agony for our family. We will continue to work with you, the Superintendent, DESI, outside counsel, but with other kids who are suffering without advocacy that we're providing for our son. We've heard lots of stories from other parents and our son of other kids in similar bad situations. Here say eighty, or we're to smoke this fire. All we're saying is hold teachers more accountable. The teachers don't value, and we believe in public education and the service, but there are, in any standard distribution, there are going to be outliers. If those outliers don't value children first, their psychology and process to support safety learning, they should seek another role. Grossed up, not, actually not grossed up, not including healthcare or pension, the average teacher's salary in Silver Lake in 2021 was almost $93,000. That is 67% greater than the average income of a single person in Halifax, 59% greater than the same of Kingston, and 71% greater than Clinton. Teachers are well compensated and should be held more accountable for our children's learning safety. My comments to leadership are the same. I have shared the same documents sent to the committee with outside educators in similar size for larger schools, and they were disgusted, both teachers and administrators. One response was, "The way in which he's been treated is deplorable." I quote, "Administration's strategy of pressuring, scapegoating, and gaslighting the victim is deplorable." These are peer educators in Massachusetts, please be better. We will continue to advocate. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Sir, I thank you, first of all, thank you for coming in and having your thoughts, very well thought out and coordinated. Bullying and such is nothing this committee condones. Certainly, we've had incidences in the past, and the, you know, at one point, the American Defamation League coming in and doing some training. I think you said something about, you've gone through the process to the point where you mentioned DESI, you've done something with DESI.
DESI should have already been in touch with you about their investigation.
Okay.
If not, it will be.
Okay, alright. Let me say this, let me, well, I'd be privy to the DESI response.
I don't know that they copy school quizzes, it's generally shared with the superintendent and oftentimes the special education director.
Okay, alrighty.
Anyway, I'm not sure if I can provide that update to this committee in open session where it's about a student.
Let us see what DESI comes back with, even if we're not privy specifically, let me see what DESI comes back with in their findings.
They're in possession of the same amount of documentation that I provided every person on this committee, other than the most recent documentation, which I will assemble on as well.
Let me digest this and come back to you. I will get your contact information.
It's on the email, on the center of the committee, pretty easily.
And I will look into what I'm able to share with the Chair.
Our hands are tied by privacy issues, obviously, but let's see where the process takes us, and I will respond back to you.
Okay.
Anybody else, have any?
I received your email, and I believe I'd like to know that I received your email.
You did, thank you.
Just to comment back.
Appreciate it.
Because to the Chair's point, we're not able to discuss due to privacy issues, so...
I fully understand.
But I too hope that there's resolution that's positive for your son.
As a parent, I have to ask, understand PIPA and any other variation of a privacy law is a viable. It has been inconsistent in practice, has been our experience thus far.
Okay. Well, I thank you again for coming in and giving us this sort of detail and update.
Thank you for having me at this forum, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Alrighty, new poll, public participation, approval of minutes. Minute one, here's a motion.
I made a motion to approve the regular session minutes of April 9. Let me put four.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Okay.
I have a chair, I'd like to make a motion to take an item out of order.
Sure.
So if I could, I'm due to leave early, so I'd like to present the pack report from our last meeting of the year.
Yep, let's do a second.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, committee. So, it was a big meeting, and there's a lot of information, so I just wanted to pass this on. We did pass the budget for the FY25 cap in the amount of $11,015,505.22. We also approved the Charro Professional and ESP contract for FY24, 257. And the last big item was, there was another budget surplus this year, they did not freeze tuition, it is going to be for FY24, 25, $68,811, which is a small increase. And there was a motion made, because they're upgrowing their space, to set aside an amount of $500,000 into a reserve fund, so that we will be in a position to move into a dedicated space for a cap when it becomes available. Any questions on any of that?
The tuition, for which program was that in?
That was the only one, they just gave us, so I'm not sure if that was for Seaside, or if they're all going to be that amount, or if they're, but that was the only dollar amount that was given for tuition per student.
Thank you.
They never actually upgrown that space, were they looking for a building before? Am I remembering that?
So, they did commission a building down at the Registry Motor Vehicles in Plymouth, they built with a private company, Fox Rock, a purpose-built building for their social emotional high school. It does hold five to 12, and they also had a building down in Plymouth that they were looking to purchase. That fell through, the town of Plymouth took it off the market right before they did buy it, so they've been renting their Seaside program out of rental space for ten. Amy is more current on their current needs, but they did have a purpose-built building, I was part of that building committee.
And I think moving forward, they are, Dipna was saying that they are actually not looking to purchase a building in case, because the needs change from year to year, if they build a building and it turns out to be too big or too small or not what they need, so they are looking to move into rental, and I believe they are going to be renting some space from Silver Lake moving forward, maybe Kingston.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you, is that the entire report?
That's, that's pretty much the entire report, there's just a lot of money items.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Thank you, and thank you for coming in before the concert?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Silver Lake concert tonight.
Enjoy.
I'll be here a little bit.
Okay. Alrighty. Facilities update. So, I'm gonna start with that. The CTE overhead door project is, I want to give you a status, I put some schedules from Habib and Associates in the folder. So, the bids for the CTE overhead door project were posted on March 11th, they were due back on April 11th, and the schedule said that we would award the contract on May 9th, we didn't have a meeting, so we weren't able to, to talk about it and vote. The NATO Corporation was the lowest bid at $177,600, there were three bids received that ranged from the $177,600 up to $349,246. The $177,600 plus the engineering costs for this project is $19,300 more than what was budgeted. I put a document in the folder for you that had a brief summary of where we were with FY24 capital projects, and you can see that for the stage curtains for the middle school and high school alone, there was $60,000 budgeted, but $37,631 spent, so there is an excess of $22,379 there. So we certainly have the capital money available for this project, and the next step for me would be to send a certificate or a vote and a notice to proceed to NATO Corporation, but that requires a vote from the school committee. Mark?
So, to just add to that very well, the presentation, the engineering costs were $23,500, I believe, which we had to do to get prepared for this project. The bid only has two doors in it.
I was gonna ask that, okay.
So, other than that, I think Sarah gave a nice present. So without being able to get the third door, at least in that side of the building done, the alternate was no savings, was an additional $79,000 to do the third door. We certainly don't have enough money, I believe, in the capital plan to do that, but we did find enough money thanks to the shortages on the other two projects. We have enough to do two doors. And then, we have our house doctor here, Scott Bankroth, that gave us some details on why this repair is going to take so much money. Most people think a garage door is certainly not a $79,000 project, but I'd like to yield the floor and introduce Scott Bankroth to the group, and let him do a real quick presentation on why.
Yeah, so, we spent a lot of time looking into this, it turns out that it's not just overhead doors, it's an assembly of components, and each of those openings, there's five openings, they originally built with a structural steel frame, then the door was inset into it. And we learned as the project went on, that during 2001, when that overhead door was replaced, it's not the original door, the steel frames were cut to get the motor to be inset into it. So the frame on both sides of the door, there's a gap there, so whenever you open the door, the door is just vibrating, moving, there's no structural integrity left for that frame, so that's a big chunk of the money for these doors. You know, if you replace just the overhead door, you still get the same problem, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be racking, you know? The steel frame has to be repaired in order to get this, get these doors to work correctly. And this is, it sounds like this has been a problem for a while, with some of the doors just not opening.
Yeah, they don't close correctly, they don't open correctly. We get a lot of water in certain areas, because the top of the door is sticking out, you know, almost a full inch. We'd have to replace doors over the years, because they completely brought out. Metal fabric door has the biggest issue, when the sun comes up and it heats up that door, we're constantly in there adjusting the door strength, because the door swells up in heat, and when you come in and try to lean from the inside, they push the door, it doesn't engage, because it's so tight.
Yeah, like when you're talking about this entry door.
The entry door.
And not the garage door.
Yeah, but it's all part of the problem with the frame, so we could put a new entry door there, but they're in the same position. Replacing the doors is just impossible.
Yeah, everything's tied to that steel, it's like a 12-inch structural project that runs from, you know, the ground up to the underside of the roof framing, and it was just cut to get that motor for the overhead door, so now that's compromised, that's really under the place.
So, basically, it's not a garage door, it's a rebuild of the entire steel frame, there's concrete mortar work involved. The bid documents of this particular project were 270 pages, which was nice to share, but it took me quite a while to pull through. It's a pretty extensive project, it's just whether or not the committee feels, you know, when you create that kind of price tag, the other things we're paying for. Relate, getting to this situation, and I wouldn't want to second guess the work that has been done to date, and we haven't invested a lot of money into it, all those things considered, but I think it's a committee decision of whether or not this is a repair at this point, to go forward. There was some addressing of safety concerns, that the doors wouldn't be able to open and close in the event of lockdowns and that kind of, I don't know if they are typically used in an open position when, during classwork, and they're assumed they are cycled open and closed to bring a vehicle in and out in this case. I don't think it's necessarily as safe to somebody getting hurt, it is a structural component that eventually we're gonna have to fix on the building, but it is much more involved than a garage door replacement, so.
If I could just touch on the safety concern that Mr. Greenbrowing mentioned, I had a conversation with Facilities Director Lawless, he had, just prior to our conversation, been over in the CTE wing and had manually closed the door, because it doesn't open and shut electronically, and he said it took him about 10 minutes. I was shocked to learn that, and I had a conversation with Mr. Blet, who is part of the emergency response team for the high school, and I asked if the doors were open and the building were to go into a lockdown, is this going to, 10 minutes to shut a door, is that a concern? And the answer back was yes. So, it's not as much a safety concern that the door's gonna slip down and close on somebody's foot, it's, it's an integrity of the building when you don't want people coming in.
But I, I think that that's certainly a concern, but I think the concern is, we have the funds right now to do two doors, but these may be the limit. As we go forward, we can significantly reduce the capital plan next year, and it would be hard to find $79,000 a year for the next three years to be able to do this, assuming the price is asphalt, if all of these doors need this kind of retention. At this point, I think I would support going forward with the two doors that we have, you know, as long as the committee understands that that's why the price is so high. And we're gonna, we're gonna have to find some funds to, to replace the remaining doors if they all have the same specs, is that the case?
I'd like to do all five of them, I'd like to cut to get the motor for the door. And the other alternatives, if the space doesn't require this kind of doors, perhaps there's another alternative.
Is this structural?
Yeah, that's missing, that's the missing, yeah.
That's missing, but what?
It's wind bracing for the door, yeah, well, it's not supporting the roof, but it is wind bracing for the, for the actual head door, you know, it's a...
But it's not structural, right?
It is, it is structural for the door, it's, yeah.
But now it's reinforced?
Yeah, yeah, it's gone, it was missing, it was taken out, yeah, it's a 2001, just to get that motor to fit for that existing overhead door, so like that. But it's not, it's not supporting the roof, it's just basically wind bracing, supporting, you know, something for the door to attach to that keeps it solid, you know?
And the last question I have is, is there be any, cannot use the doors, remove the doors, replace the structure, and replace the door that's there with a new operator or anything, there's no, the entire door will be replaced? I know in 2001, we talked 23 local.
Yeah, yeah, it's in pretty bad shape, and we, you know, we were very cautious about what we'd use for the new door, it's basically replacing that door in kind with the type of door that's in, it's nothing fancy, you know? But we were, we did show an automatic door, because that's what's in now, you know, the new door will have a motor that's out in front, and it'll be a little bit different, so we don't have to, we won't have that interference with the structural frame, you know, we'll do it right.
And these doors will have some windows too, you know, so someone's not opening the door, and someone's just opening it with their elevator, it's out there, so you'll be able to see it as often as you believe.
Well, they add a little better R-value than the ones we had.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah, in automatic installation.
So you would be replacing the frame, because that sounds like it's a huge problem.
Yeah, it's about 18 feet by 13 foot, big, yeah.
Okay. And are these two the worst doors of, of the five, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay.
Metal fabric is the worst overall, so that's why we chose metal fabric automotive, because automotive's used the most with cars in the neighborhood, and when we have issues with that door, you know, cars get stuck in there, lots of things, and then we open the doors that door, so we were hoping there'd be enough money to do the middle door, which is the throttle related door, you know, but we didn't have enough to do it too.
So one in metal fabric, one in automotive?
Yes.
Okay. What's the warranty, generally speaking, on, on this?
I believe it, I believe it should be 20 years, if I can double check that.
Okay.
So, we just need a motion to move the funds from the capital plan, I guess that the administration feels comfortable, even though they have the authority to have a committee support transferring the funds from one capital project to the other to fund.
Yeah, and that should be a committee vote.
Yeah.
That absolutely, you know, $500 here or there isn't material, this is, this is a material decision, it should be a committee vote. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none?
We'll transfer the funds, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Do you need a second? You'll say.
You didn't have a motion yet, did you?
No, I didn't, I didn't know who was in a veto.
Did you need to make a motion with the correct amount? Just for...
I'm gonna have to get some help. I'm gonna have to get some help.
Yeah.
With the pennies.
Um, let me pull up my spreadsheet.
We can make the motion, I think, to just fund the inside projects with the funds available. Okay? Because you've, you've had two surpluses in the budget. I don't know.
Yeah, Sarah, if you have numbers, I... You would be changing the amount that was budgeted for the CTE doors from $181,800 to $201,100, using excess funds from the stage curtains project.
And the... Do you need both? I don't know.
Yeah, the, the stage, the stage curtain savings was $22,379.
Say your motion.
That's a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, very good.
Thank you very much.
So do I have the committee's permit? I, I believe I need a vote to award the contract to, I need a, I need a vote in order to send a certificate, I'm sorry, a notice to proceed. So it's a certificate of vote slash notice to proceed. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Can I ask a quick question about the remaining three doors? So those are gonna have to be done at some point, right?
That's what I think the safer committee will, will try to get your, an idea, and we'll get, get your capital plan proposal, and perhaps we can make some rearrangements to next year's plan.
Is that beyond the capabilities of our CTE program if there's less urgency?
To, to construct these doors? Oh, yeah. I, I think I can speak for that.
So...
You wanna build doors again?
No, that's not...
But I, I think there would be an advantage, and I don't know about the timing of this, but if we did find the funds and could accept the alternate at a later date for the third door before they mobilize to the site and start the work, which I understand is coming up soon, we may be able to do the three doors if we sacrifice another project, but I have not looked at the capital plan enough to make a proposal at this time. That, that would be something that Michael would have to bring forward to the, to the committee.
Now, is this something that would be done while the students are still in school, or would it be started when school's out? Or does it matter?
Timing wise, it depends on that, but it's definitely gonna be towards the end of the summer, hopefully not into the school year, but maybe.
Okay. Nice thought there. So the next two things on facilities update, the RTU for roofing unit for the high school and the HVAC project for the middle school. I want to, I also put the schedule from Habib and Associates for those two projects in. I want to alert you to the fact that we're in the process right now where the notification has gone out in all of the statutory required ways to send out notification for bids, that the bids for the RTU four unit are due June 13th with the contracts to be awarded June 21st. The bids for the HVAC project are due June 21st with the contracts to be awarded June 28th. The reason why I wanted to talk about these is we have a tight timeline. Kingston and Plington used ARPA funds from Plymouth County for these projects, and we need a contract by June 30th for those. And so I'm thankful to Habib and Associates and the work that Scott Bancroft has done because we did ask him in February if we could have a quick turnaround time, and so barring no problems, we will have a request again in June for a notice to proceed and awarding the contract for those two projects.
Can I ask a question? We do meet again virtually on June 6th, and that is too early? Correct, so we're gonna need to put another meeting on the books. Or could we reschedule June 6th? Because two meetings in June would make it more difficult to pull off. Okay. I'm, I'm flexible, whatever works. If you wanna move that date, we could reorg and then do this contract business. What date would work? It, it would have to be the 28th because that's a Friday, and it, it would have to be... So again, the bids are due on the 21st, and when those come in, then there's the, think of it like reference checks. So the, the, and Scott, you probably know more about this than I do, but when the bids come in, there's, yes, there's the number that says this is the lowest bidder, but the law says the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, and so a decision has to be made if somebody says they can do the project for $25, I'll bet, for, for $2,000 or whatever amount, a decision has to be made over whether the company giving this amount as a quote is actually capable of doing the work for that amount. And so that's work that Scott and his cohort would be doing.
Yeah, we'll do reference checks and things for the, for the worst of the bidders, just to make sure that they are good, legitimate bidder.
And how many days will that take? Because that, the 28th is the last possible day we could do this.
Yeah, yeah, once the bids come in that day, the following day, we should be able to turn that over pretty quick and get your recommendation letter to proceed.
So we could conceivably do something earlier than the 28th of June, something earlier in that week? I just, I, I don't know about anybody else, but...
I won't be available the 28th, Friday night.
Are you... My preference would be to back it up by a couple of days so that if something happened, we've got a couple of extra days. 24. Well, the 24, the bids are due the 21st, which is a Friday.
The Tuesday or Wednesday?
So, yeah, Tuesday or Wednesday, I guess. I mean, there, there's the work that needs to be done.
I'm just gonna go first. Tuesday work.
Yeah, the June 6th is gonna be virtual.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You can't cancel the June 6th. We need to reorganize. We would essentially not have a committee until we reorganize as of May 31st.
And, so we can't reorganize on the 24th or so, 25th?
So you would not have a chair, vice chair, the officers would not be impaneled, the new members of the committee potentially per votes of their towns would not be part of the committee officially until they sit at their first meeting. So we need to reorg as close to the end of May as possible. We do not need administration available at that meeting. Someone who's not putting themselves up for a candidate for an officer can do the roll call and solicit the vote or the nominations for chair, and then the chair can take it from there.
Okay, and you, and you feel we have to do that, that early in the month?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Just in case the superintendent, for example, does get correspondence from Dussie that needs the signature of the chair, we would be without a chair potentially for close to a full month.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like folks, and I apologize, we're gonna need to stick with the 6th virtually for a quick reorg, relatively speaking. And then a second meeting, we could do virtually again, if nobody objects, on the 25th or so?
I think Sarah preferred the 25th.
I, I lost track. I, I, Tuesday. I would prefer Tuesday or Wednesday to give Scott the time to do the work that he needs to do.
That works.
Okay. Well, Wednesday we'd be giving him that extra day and still give us two days if something happened.
So that, that's fine. I would not be available, but someone else could be available. Ryan could be available.
Okay, that's, we would not pressure you to join us. So the 20, June 25th?
That's the Tuesday.
26th.
26th, I'm sorry. Okay.
And we will print that as virtual as well, Madam Chair?
Yes. So that concludes everything I wanted to talk about with the, the rooftop unit for the high school and the HVAC project for the middle school, and I would turn this over to Facilities Director Mike Wallace and Scott Bancroft from Habib and Associates, if anyone were to have any questions about those two projects.
Madam Chair, we, we first 10:00 on 26th.
Yes, yeah. Do we have any other comments or questions for, for Scott or Mike on these two topics? Okay, all right, seeing none. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Actually, may I just, real quick, before Mr. Wallace leaves, the fields have looked phenomenal this year, and I know that there may not be, we're out there doing it, but it's within your purview, so if I could just give you a shout out, you guys have looked phenomenal.
Yeah, the guys work out on it, so.
You look real good.
Okay, thanks. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
All righty, folks, on the next agenda item, Dave is actually going to work on some amendments to the contract, so we are not going to be discussing loading that contract this evening. Carpentry project. Elliot.
Sure, thanks for your time. As you know, at this time of year, we are typically looking for your support in signing a contract that we signed with an outside customer for our construction program of the carpentry department, and we have a great project that we're recommending, that we've been working with a customer on. I previewed this quickly with our CTE subcommittee last time we sat together in April. I did share the, the plans, the application with Paula, and so the contract, just again, is signed by the, the school president chair and the customer, so should be looking for your vote. This project is in walking distance of the high school. It's on White Pine Lane, which is off of Westerly across the street here, which is in proximity standpoint, couldn't be better for us. It is a two-car garage with a mudroom that's built off the side of a home. All of the pieces that we look at to evaluate from course curriculum to the scope of work, safety considerations, travel and location, customer readiness are all scored very high for us. So it's a great project, it's got all the elements of framing and new construction that we look for, with a good customer that's ready to go, and so looking for your support for us to proceed with that customer.
I thought it looked like a beautiful project, wonderful project. I do have one question for you, Elliot. In the contract, it did say, off the top of my head, something to the effect of they can't sell the home for so many years, otherwise they have to pay something, and I, I see the pain in your face.
Yeah, so I would just tell you, and I think that someone's heard me say this before, we, we just have a very old contract that's really in need of being updated, and it should be something that I probably spent some time with this summer, and we moved our attorney in to, to update, I think it's, we're working with a contract that's 20-plus years old, probably with the original structure, so there's some things there that I don't think need to be planned.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I, my question was if we have any ability to track them, or it's, it's really the honor system?
Yeah, I think that's probably been our history.
Yeah, yeah. Certainly, Elliot, leverage our council to, to update that, certainly. Russ works with all kinds of other schools, he may have something off the shelf he can massage and make Silver Lake and not take up too much of your time with.
Yeah.
I think the location couldn't be more perfect.
I, I agree, that was the first thing I noticed was the address on there, and I mean, it, it's really, you, you don't have to work, are you going to still have to transport by van, or will everyone just do the...
Yeah, no, so we still move our students with our heavy passenger bus, and, and, you know, we leave our contractor trailer on somebody's property for the year, but you, you can be inter-district and be 15 minutes away from the school, and so that additional 30 minutes of travel to, with some places is a real loss of instructional time, so...
I was gonna say, that's gonna make the project hopefully go quicker.
Yeah.
That's great. I will make a motion that we accept the CTE proposal for this year's project.
I'll say go for it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Elliot, just anecdotal footnote that has nothing to do with this project. I took one of the classes, the adult education classes, I took a woodery board with Chef Jewel. And I bring this up because first of all, the class was wonderful. When it was, when it was time to leave, none of us wanted to leave. I could have easily spent another hour in there. And what I loved about it was the carpentry class made the boards that we were making our cheese platters on, so it was two different facets of CTE, which I thought was a nice thing about taking that class. So I, I just had to tell you, I, it, it was a great experience, and I loved how carpentry played a role in it.
Great. Join, that's a great job, so I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
If I may only say that I would like to compliment Elliot and my KIA for organizing the chili coco and the car show and the plant sale, and I hope to see the same next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it will turn into an annual fundraiser for the skills kids, so.
Thanks for coming.
A lot of people, so thank you, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. All righty, folks, principals reports.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna actually put the documents on the screen. I have two days free tonight. I have the improvement plan. And I really geared this towards the district strategy improvement, so I put all four goals on here, and in building relationships, you can see the introduction, I really wanna thank the school council members, Keith Sexton from Plington, Gemma Thies from Kingston, and Melissa Johnson from Halifax. They've been instrumental in managing not only some revisions in our handbook, but the school improvement plan, which we've talked about all year. I showed them slides and we worked through slides, but then I put this in the narrative for all of you and for documentation purposes. So I mentioned the strategy for district improvement, and you can see here that each of our goals are built on that document. What I wanna highlight is goal number one, building relationships. I never expected when I made up this TVY event at middle school that the kids would take ownership of it, and even at the high school, as freshmen, they were like, do I get a TVY ticket? So that has happened in the cafeteria, which makes, warms my heart a little bit, but they really believe in the incentive of thinking beyond themselves and doing for others. And so that's really what we believe here, and that builds relationships between students, between teachers, and between students and administrators. So I highlighted that in goal number one, and then goal number two, I really highlighted our data that we talked about in the fall, and we saw a lot of improvement in grade eight mathematics and some moderate growth towards our targets, but we're, really, we were most excited about the grade eight mathematics and the students that exceeded expectations, which I'll talk about in my next presentation. So you can, you know, read this at your leisure, and then goal number three, aligned and engaging curriculum. So in a minute, I'm gonna talk about our professional practice goal at the middle school and the high school in regards to teachers working on common assessments, and in the middle school, they religiously meet twice a week and work on these assessments and really think about how that moves our instruction in the classroom. And lastly, goal number four, we talked about multi-tiered systems of support here, and we're still working through that process and kind of how that can work, but I've talked to you a lot about not only how we meet students where they're at, but also those grade seven exploratory classes, which I can't thank you enough for keeping, because the students have so much more energy and focus on how they want to choose their classes in eighth grade this year, and it's been really rewarding for all of us. We also put in the bottom of this improvement plan how we really strive to be one of the safest and most well-prepared communities in the Commonwealth. We just added, thanks to the, you know, the budget, Steve Pello and the tech team, 44 additional cameras for a total of 87 cameras, which might seem like, why do we show all those cameras, but let me tell you, the kids know, and the minute something happens, we are on top of it, and they know what's expected of them, you know, and that we have eyes everywhere in hallways, and that really kind of benefits us for safety purposes. We also have our assistant principal, Mr. Rothbich, who is not only safety care trained, but also an ALICE trainer, so he received that status last summer, and so he's been also working with our staff to ensure that we are as safe as possible here in the building, which I'm really proud of. So this improvement plan just needs your vote for acceptance, and then I will move on to some other parts of academic life here and how we have been working on common assessments in the district.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion to accept the school improvement plan for the Silver Lake Regional Middle School as presented, with great thanks to the committee members.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So the next thing I want to just show you and present is a learning update for the middle school. On my opening slide here, I've listed our instructional leadership team members, who I could not do this work without. Our curriculum coordinators are the backbone of this work, and even though I'm only gonna speak about four subjects tonight, each discipline is continuing their work of creating and implementing common assessments, which is our professional goal in Silver Lake. And so I put that on slide number two. I talked about this early in September. On the third slide, you can see that one of our common assessments that we utilize is STAR testing. We use this from elementary school all the way till eighth grade, specifically in English Language Arts. STAR is a reading comprehension assessment that is norm referenced and computer adaptive, which means that if a student comes in at seventh grade and is really reading at an eleventh grade level, it will move them through the higher passages as they get the questions correct. So we get more information, right, than just middle school level information. You can see on this slide that our partially meeting expectations and our not meeting expectations went down from winter to spring, which is the good news, because they went up, right, from fall to spring in meeting expectations. We are still wondering, hmm, I don't know, how does that happen? I know, I barely touched it. This is what happens. We are still wondering and thinking about our exceeding expectations category, because even though on STAR testing, which only measures comprehension, you know, we went down a percentage point, and we really feel like we should be going up in that area. And you'll see in our math slides, we are, but in this comprehension test, we, we aren't. While STAR measures growth in comprehension, it doesn't assess writing. So our curriculum coordinator, Nicola Panastev, and the teachers have really focused on how do we develop common assessments on writing. Our ELA teachers have been hard at work and have them analyzing these certain standards. In seventh grade, this is their first year utilizing these, so we have preliminary data that shows our students are proficient, right, in RL, that's reading language, standard one, three, and four, which is very exciting. In an eighth grade, you can see some comparative results between the fall and the spring, where they've made some gains in RL one and RL two. And now we're focusing on these standards, which are far more complex. This is an argumentative standard, so how do they argument, create an argument and persuade the reader, right, with research and evidence? So that is far more complex, but we're working on that. Moving on to social studies, which is...
Could you give me just a second?
Sure.
Go back two slides.
Two, this one or one more?
Go back one more.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a teacher-created assessment?
Yep.
And it's a, is it multiple choice, or it's actually...
No, it's actually written narrative or expository with a rubric.
Okay, so then go to the next slide. So we're saying that in three and four, we declined 12 and 16% from fall to the spring?
Yeah, in RL three and RL four, those standards. Now, it is a different passage and a different prompt, so there could be some bias or differentiation between those two, which is also, you know, part of who we are as, I feel like, learners and teachers compared to a norm reference or evidence-based assessment. So that's also the parts that we talk about, for sure.
Yeah, it surprises me that that number would be that high in the fall, which suggests maybe that there's a way assessment issue as opposed to super performance.
And we did have those conversations, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Because when we do these ourselves, right, it does bring that level of questioning, and you know, that's part of our practice goal, professional practice goal, but we have some work to do there, and the conversations are robust and worthy. In good news, the social studies department has decided that they want to focus on the same standards as the element, as the English department. And they're focusing on summarization, which is a hard skill for every student, no matter what age. You can see the standard down here, it's key ideas and details, and you can see that in their pre-assessment, 29 students, 29% of students were proficient, and in the first assessment, in the second assessment, they gained some knowledge background and understanding of summarization, and then proved themselves in that standard. So that was pretty worthy, but I really like the connection between social studies, in this case, ancient civilizations, and summarization. They're really trying to do cross-curricular projects and cross-curricular writing assessments, which I think can only benefit us.
This again is assessments that our teachers have created?
Yep. So all, that's part of our goals, professional practice goals, which is on slide number two. Same thing with mathematics. So you can see here, in the fall, teachers created this assessment. They actually already had it created from the last two years, but they put it on a platform called Edge Elastic. And they found that students were succeeding at the standard within 60%, meeting and exceeding. And this I put in here was really around fractions. And moving on, in, in grade eight, they've been focusing on linear equations and radicals and integer exponents. In each case, we're excited to see students succeeding. 50% of students meeting and exceeding the standards in grade eight, far more students exceeding here as well. And again, same, same situation. Lastly, in science...
Are those machine-generated assessments in math?
They are created by teachers, but then they are placed in a computer program that then corrects, and not really corrects them, but they put the answers in, and then it analyzes the results over the whole entire class, and then over four sections of the class, and then over three teachers in that same grade level. In science, students are applying their learning through open science, and their assessments look much different these days, like the ones they will be trying out next year in the field tests of MCAS. You can see here that many students are partially meeting various standards, and we are working on ways to engage students in this applied learning. So now, unlike when we were kids in science, instead of regurgitating scientific content, students are being asked to investigate and design experiments when given a problem or represented with scientific theory. And they're, they're asked to kind of defend that on the test, which is not necessarily how this MCAS is gonna be given next week, but it's how the test is going to be compiled next year. I also think it's important enough to say that each department, music, world language, and special education are working on their own assessments. They have far more data to share, but I wanted to give you a short presentation. Michaela did the same thing of the work that's been accomplished thus far, and the work that we will continue this summer and next school year. So thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I appreciate the narrative, and I appreciate the data together. I think data sometimes, given in isolation, doesn't really tell the whole story. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a curriculum group that has coordinated us in working on this sort of So, are they just studying just how the students perform, or do they also, are they also studying the performance of the assessments themselves?
They're doing both, and then they're even studying beyond that, what is the curriculum, and what should the curriculum look like? Because either we're succeeding in that area, or we have holes in these other areas, and we can see that on either our homemade assessments, or our norm reference assessments, like STAR reading.
Yeah, so, when we're evaluating our own self-created, machine-generated material, do we have, I'm sorry to be so...
No, it's fine.
But it goes toward ensuring that these things actually add up too successfully on MCAS. Are we calculating anything like actual difficulty of the items, and then correlation or discrimination? And are we doing anything, if we're doing multiple choice, are we doing anything with distractor analysis or anything like that?
So, we don't have the staffing for that kind of data analysis, but, or necessarily the preference to focus on that level of data analysis. What this process does is, one, the norm reference materials, no one here is going to become a psychometrician, they're not going to be developing something that is necessarily a norm reference material, but the benefit is the teachers working together and focusing on, to what extent does this assessment actually measure what we want it to measure? And those conversations are what lead to the tighter alignment in the conversation. So while I agree that it's not as scientific as other measures, absolutely no doubt about it, I think it will be revealing to the teachers and to administrators to see to what extent were any of, any of their common assessments predictive of how students did. But because this is the first year, that level of analysis is, we're not there yet. We're still working on, working together to make sure that the rubrics, that we're reaching consensus as to what makes a five, a four, a three, a two, and a one.
And aligning with MCAS, as what we know.
Okay. So, I don't want to get too far into your business of it, but difficulty is super easy to calculate, and it doesn't take a psychometrician, it's just a percentage of students who are right. Correlation is also super easy to calculate, which is just...
And I'm not saying that they're not capable of it, I'm saying that they're at a spot right now where we're still in the emerging stages, and beginning to look at, it's no small task to get a group of educators just to agree on what the assessment's going to be. That in and of itself is a worthwhile and important conversation that occurs between teachers. So, again, I just, I felt the need to jump in only because I feel like the focus here is really, we're at the beginning stages, and certainly, as we grow and learn, we can begin to add more statistical analysis.
And I think the programs we have have a degree of that available, and we have to dive more deeply into that as well.
So we've also purchased a software platform where all of our data can be combined, that will help us in some of that analysis, so that we don't, in the past, everything was done on chart paper with markers, it would take hours to create a digital room. And not that there isn't value in it, there's still value in that kind of physical going visual, but the reality is, is that most of our teachers and administrators have a full day. So spending time just to break down the data and analyze it is a time-consuming process. So that platform will help.
You shouldn't mistake me when I ask questions. This is big progress across like the three years that I've been doing this, like, we couldn't have this conversation three years ago. So, just the common assessments and being able to track fall versus spring and things like that, that's, that's great news. I will gently plug again for correlation, if you'd like to, for the correlations, it's very sad.
Yes.
But, but this is, this is very progress. I'm, will be very interested to see what you can do in correlating success here with what happens on MCAS.
And if it doesn't, we're okay with that, because we can use that as a learning experience as well, to what? And so, I, you know, I appreciate your expertise, and certainly we appreciate you keep pushing us to do better and be better, because that's, I think, the goal of everyone.
I have a low degree working with about 30 psychometricians.
Yeah. We'll take them in back.
All right, so transitioning now over to the high school, our update on common assessments and data. One thing, and I think I pointed this out in the fall, so we spent the first part of the school year, as both the faculty and then our department groups, analyzing student MCAS scores, and really breaking down, where do they perform well, and what are areas that we need to help our students improve? And at the end of the day, you know, we're all responsible as both faculty for helping our students improve. It doesn't matter if I'm an English teacher or not, you know, we are reading and writing and pass all curriculum. So, we spent the better half of the first part of the year focusing on that with any department or faculty and professional development time that we had. And so, go to my next slide, please, thank you. Today, I'm gonna highlight our three core MCAS subjects, but I just want to point out that this work has been going on in every department throughout the whole year. So, as a school, our goal was to develop common assessments for students in ELA. Those common assessments were administered across all four grade levels, targeting multiple standards. They were developed by grade-like teams who collaborated on the design, and also created those rubrics to score the assessments with. For our freshmen and sophomores, we focused on MCAS-aligned text-based reading questions, narrative, and analysis writing. For our juniors, we focused on argumentative writing, analysis, and then for our seniors, narrative and argument writing, text-based reading questions. And then the common assessments that were developed were administered in November and January, and then we have them coming up for seniors in May, and then our underclassmen again in June. So, our hope is, over the next couple of years, to really develop a strong bank of these common assessments that can be administered to students at, you know, the end of each term, or the mid-year, and the final exam period of time. So, in English too, looking at the standards, student performance improved significantly from the fall to the winter. Obviously, we haven't issued our final assessments yet, so that data is still to be determined. The numbers in red, as a district member, our goal's to meet 70%, meaning or exceeding. So we, we're falling short of that goal in three of our different standards, the beginning of the year, but we've made significant improvement throughout the year. We're down, two more to go to get to that level that we're aiming for. I do want to point out though, you know, Gordon, you asked a question to Becky, in some of the standards, yes, the numbers went down, we didn't slip below that 70%, yes, they went down. And so that's, you're seeing my little note at the bottom. The fall assessment was focused on a text that students were reading and studying as a class, so they'd spent a few weeks in that unit, whereas the mid-year assessment was what we call like a cold reading, so it's a reading they weren't familiar with. So that could account for some of the change in scores. As far as next steps, now, okay, what do we do? We know how our students perform, what do we need to do next? In the ELA department, we're gonna continue to use department meeting and professional development time to collaborate on those common assessments, scoring rubrics, calibrating the scores, and then developing scaffolds and supports in our classrooms to support our students. The ELA department uses a data analysis protocol to examine those data trends, and they adjust student support plans as needed. We also, as a school, are focusing on MTSS, more on that later, this year, but really honing in on what are some additional tier-two interventions that we can provide for students who may need some additional academic support. And then examining individual items, student growth across standards, to discuss the impact on instructional planning. How do we need to change what we're doing, you know, forward-facing with the kids? And then one concern that is here, and is again, common across our building, excuse me, and one of the reasons we're advocating for a different bell schedule, is we really need more time to spend on this. At the high school level, we have two department meetings a month, one faculty meeting a month, all together, that's actually less than three hours a month. So, you know, we're using that time to its greatest extent possible, but time is such a precious commodity, as we all know. So it would be great if we could find another way to get that time in our schedule for teacher professional development. In math, common assessments were administered in Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry, and Precalc. Again, teachers work in teams to develop them, work on the scoring criteria, and then analyzing the data after the students have taken those tests. The math department had a pretty good head start in this, they have had some common assessments for a few years now, so they were able to use their time to really dig into the data more so, and make adjustments to those assessments as needed throughout the year. They also, much like our staff at the middle school, are adopting Edge Elastic, which then they can input all their information, and it gives us some great reports. And then EduPlatter, which is the new platform Jill was mentioning, will be instrumental next year in providing student data. So if we look, we took a sample from our Algebra I standards. In the fall, students, we had 65% of our students meeting or exceeding, and then tested this past spring, in April, we had 83% students meeting or exceeding. So it was great to see some growth there. And our science... In our science department, common assessments were administered in our introductory physics class and our biology class. These are our freshman and sophomore science classes. Our students take the physics MCAS exam at the end of their freshman year. But then if they are unable to pass, we do have an opportunity to take the biology when they're sophomore year. Each of the content areas developed four assessments that they're able to administer this year. So about the end of each term, including mid-years and finals. And I apologize, it's really small prints on the next slide. But hopefully the colors give you a good visual. You can see very few students are at that partially or not meeting level. We have a great success student assessment this year. And this shows it's introductory physics, the college prep level on the left, honors on the right. And as far as next steps in our science department go, they want to continue to familiarize themselves with EduLastic tools to help strengthen teacher analysis of data. Continue using any department or PD time we have to collaborate on that assessment design. Again, similar to our other departments, and we want to see it in more of our science classes beyond just the freshman and sophomore level. And then just continuing to examine individual items, student growth. And again, what the biggest, our biggest want, our biggest wish right now is just more time to focus on this. But I think considering how hectic school years can get, a lot of great work done by our teachers in all of our departments developing these common assessments and really digging in deep to that data analysis. I think that's something that has been new for a lot of our staff. And I'm just proud of them for taking on this challenge and, you know, stretching our brains a little bit and how we, you know, analyze student performance. So very proud of them. Any questions?
Any questions? Can you start it? Continue to ask, but where are we at with the feasibility study for?
That's my best school point. Thank you. What a great segue. No, and I'm glad that you asked. Although we are, we have fast-tracked the process this year. We started the course selection process a little bit earlier. We still aren't done building our schedule, but we are still ahead of schedule. I know it sounds like we've spent a lot of time, but it really is a very cumbersome project. But typically we are, our schedules built by like the, try to get done, so we have the school year. So our teachers have a sense of what they're teaching when they return. So typically it's done the first week of June. We hope to have it wrapped up in the next week, week and a half. And then from there, we then, you may remember, we have to go to another server to build the four-by-four schedule to test its feasibility. Because we had to make some staff cuts, if I had to make a guess, it's probably going to be difficult to sustain a four-by-four. But I'm not giving up hope yet. We'll see if we can get creative, if we pull it off. I would give you a, if we're able to do it, I would have to present that at our July meeting. So stay tuned. Off your fingers. Yeah.
So I'm sorry, I will make just a couple of comments related to the assessments.
Sure.
What you noted about the reading passages cold versus kind of warm familiarity, I think, I think your comment speaks for itself. I think in the future you'll want to try to have replicate the conditions from one thing to the next. I think that probably does explain a good bit of it. I assume when you're picking out reading passages, you're like, you're doing all the leveling and that sort of thing? Reading leveling and so forth. Is that accurate?
Be happy to speak to you.
President Experim, sure.
Hi, how are you, Gordon? So I, I built some of the common assessments for the freshman curriculum. And I also have worked as a scorer for the college board on the AP literature exam. So not only were we trying to build MCAS-style multiple choice, we were also trying to incorporate AP-style multiple choice questions as well. And this is for unlevelled freshmen. So people were understandably nervous about that, which is why we started with Oh, no mice and men passage, which is not easy reading for any freshman really, especially due to the old writing style. So we started with something they were familiar with, but that was still pretty difficult in terms of reading level for a lot of them. And the teachers were nervous, so they actually, students performed, I think, better than people thought because it was our first go-around. We wanted to allay kind of all fears, not just for like how the kids would do, but how the teachers would kind of cope with it. And then from there, that's why they then took something kind of cold read and improved and everybody felt more comfortable. But to speak to like the quality of the questions, like they are top-tier, difficult. The passages are not easy reading. I can't speak to the middle school ones, but like because Nicole Afanisit has been working on all of them, I'm sure they are difficult, above reading level passages also. But we, I'm happy to talk to you more about it if you're interested in like seeing some.
Appreciate that. So, yeah.
In your folder is a list of some books that Kingston Public Library, they continue their clean out. And we are happy to accept those books with your approval. The full list of titles is there and of course, if you go through the vetting process and we will send them a thank you note if approved.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the books.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then for his final school committee meeting, Mr. Connor Doyle.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Very happy, as Miss Gill said, to recap student activities for the final time in this capacity. So I'll get right into it. April began with some exciting times at the high school. Students enjoyed a spring spirit week, the week following April vacation. Exciting theme days included USA Day, Decades Day, and Soccer Mom and Barbecue Dad Day.
That was my favorite.
Having spirit weeks like this one bring so much energy and excitement to our building. And while I understand on the surface why some could see spirit weeks as a distraction or an unnecessary event, I believe they are more important than ever. The truth is that we have learned at the high school that changing routines can make a real difference in both the willingness and the capability that students have for learning. This year's spring spirit week surpassed expectations and as well as saw large numbers of students participating each day. Also in the month of April, as I informed this committee at last month's meeting, Mr. Anthony Weber's AP United States Government Classes Mock Election took place. The election was contentious and hard fought by both the breakfast sandwich and the French toast stick. In the end, I am happy to inform you that the French toast stick came out on top.
Come on.
They, we want to extend a big congratulations to these students running that campaign for their accomplishment. More than anything else though, this exercise in its third year has provided students in Mr. Weber's class with a greater understanding of how the American electoral system works, as well as gives other Silver Lake students an opportunity to vote in a real situation, something we found many students took advantage of this year. Kind of looking ahead to May and towards the end of the year, it's been an especially busy time for students. In the beginning of the month, a student-led production of the play Grease took place over two showings. The show was a smashing success with sellout crowds and amazing performances by all involved. On May eighth, we also hosted the second annual People's Choice Chili Cook-Off and Car Show hosted by members of our Skills USA Club and our CTE students. This event was truly one for the books as several delicious chilis were displayed and many uniquely designed cars were also shown. This community event serves as a great fundraiser for our Skills USA Club and for our CTE students. I found talking with these students that may be able to share their gifts and passions is something that's very near and dear to them. And we would like to truly commend them for their efforts as I think anybody who attended that event found it not only well-attended, but also very interesting and engaging. Throughout the first couple of weeks of May as well, we've been offering AP exams to students through the College Board Organization. Members of both the classes of 2024 and 2025 have worked diligently in their preparation for these exams. We are wishing, we continue to wish these students the best of luck and hope that their efforts will reflect this district's goals of producing well-informed scholars who care deeply about the world around them. Just yesterday, we also hosted our spring signing day for committed athletes. These individuals who signed are all extremely hardworking and are dedicated to their respective athletic pursuits. Beyond that though, they also shine as leaders in the classroom and in the halls. We would like to wish them all the best of luck on their future endeavors. Looking ahead to the end of the 2023 to 2024 school year, we still have quite a few upcoming events. We are looking forward to celebrating the class of 2024 at their graduation on May 31st. The weeks leading up to this day, we have filled with fun spirit week activities, graduation rehearsals, final opportunities for the class of 2024 to gather together before graduation and to celebrate a night of fun at the prom. We are also looking forward to welcoming the class of 2028 back to the high school on June 6th for Step Up Day. Our high school students are ready to welcome the class of 2028 to the high school with open arms and cannot wait to share their favorite memories and advice about the high school with these students. And finally, I wanted to share some final thoughts. This is my last time addressing this body in my capacity as a student representative for this committee. It has been a distinct honor being able to advocate for the ideas and wishes of my peers before this committee. I am very grateful to all of you for welcoming me this year. I especially wanted to thank Mrs. Karen Tringali for being so friendly when I first presented at school committee my sophomore year. Ms. Tringali, your act of kindness has stuck with me all these years, so thank you for everything. I also wanted to thank our regional administrative team. Middle School Principal Ms. Becky Coet, Middle School Assistant Principal Mr. Donald Rothmitch, High School Assistant Principals Ms. Catherine Pratt and Mr. Stephen Blut, and of course, High School Principal Ms. Michaela Gill for their mentorship and friendship during my time as a student leader. I would also regret not thanking our wonderful Assistant Superintendent, who we are missing here tonight, Mr. Ryan Lynch, and our excellent Superintendent Dr. Jill Prue. Your work and your presence at our schools make them a better environment to learn and grow. So thank you both for your work for the district. Finally, I would like to thank this year's school committee. To this year's members, the Honorable Chair, Ms. Paula Hatch, Vice Chair, Mr. Gordon Laws, and members, Mr. Lucas Kowalski, Mrs. Amy Courtley, Mrs. Jennifer Carroll, Mrs. Jean Coleman, Mr. Jason Frazier, Mr. Mark Weidaboni, and Mr. Michael Chican. Thank you all for your tireless commitment to our district. As a group, your sacrifices are what allow our students to learn and grow freely, bettering the world around them in the process. I am overwhelmed with gratitude for all that you have done for me and all the students of this district. I can truly say that my high school years were some of the longest, yet most enjoyable years of my life. So much of this has to do with your hard work every day. Please, don't ever underestimate the impact you all have on this community. I can assure you that whomever the incoming school committee representative ends up being, as I am currently in the process of conducting interviews for that position, I am proud to say that we have quite a bit of interest, which is a marked improvement from a few years ago. I am sure that they will be well-equipped for the role and will bring a fresh perspective to the job as well as take it places that I could not possibly dream of. And with all of that being said, I want to wish you all nothing but the best. And I will, as always, be willing to answer any class comments, questions, or concerns you may have.
You have been a pleasure, an informative, well-spoken, well-organized pleasure. I have to ask you, have you made a selection where you'd be going?
I signed the dotted line the other day. I will be attending Assumption University in the fall.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Connor, we adore you and I can't thank you enough for all of your help on the drop-off backstage, everything for the middle school.
Thank you. It's, it's been a pleasure working with you. And I have to say, I regret, you, you have quite a big presence in my home as my younger brother had the honor of being in eighth grade, your, your first year here. And the stories he would tell when we would come home, I was kicked, I used to kick myself and say, I just imagine what it would be like to be here with you as the principal. And so thank you for all you do.
And one day you might come back. We'll all hire you. Don't be afraid. Come on, join us.
So we've already offered you any internship that you could imagine. Gladly offered you at any time. And I just want to say thank you because when your presence in these meetings makes me, helps remind me of the importance of the role that we serve here. I try never to take myself too seriously, but I always take my role and responsibility seriously. So I just want to thank you for that because you're an excellent reminder for us all.
Connor, if you'd pop over to the band concert, he is back to town. She's watching better, so.
I'd love to check that out.
Hi, I'm going to miss Miss Doyle very much. So I feel like I'm on a third assistant principal. We'll be short-staffed next school year. I can't tell you how many staff members come in like, well Connor said that you can do. Yes, and I can do that. Connor's correct. So thank you for everything, Connor. We're going to miss you. And that's all for this.
Excellent. Thank you both. Moving on to the district business director. Before you begin, Sarah, I just want to actually kind of interject. I was going to say something at the beginning of the meeting and I didn't. We have a budget for next year, all three towns. Hard fought, was not an easy process. I want to thank the taxpayers for supporting the budget, all three towns. Thank you so much. I want to thank this committee for everything you did this year to get us to this point. It's, it was a brutal year. In my history of being on school committees, I, this has been the absolute most challenging budget process. I want to thank the SLEA for putting your heads together and coming up with any and all ideas you possibly could to share with us that I think is the first time I've seen that much thought and ideas pushed forward to us. I mean, you really, you know, you went to bat and came forward with some great things and we appreciate that. Having said all that, I want to thank everybody at this table and Ryan and everybody else who had a hand in it from an administrative perspective. I at times felt uncomfortable with how we were hammering you to look at the numbers again, make cuts. I, it was a very uncomfortable year, very unique year. I mean, now we finally have the pre-K baked into the budget and the, we should have more smooth sailing from an understanding and a presentation and a calculation standpoint going forward. I just feel it necessary to say thank you for sticking it out with us and bringing the right members forth and presenting them and explaining them to us in a way that we finally got comfortable and said, yes, this is our Silver Lake budget this year. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Sarah. It was no small task to step into this. Thank you to the entire team. Thank you to the SLEA. Thank you to all of you. I think when things like this happen, I think it becomes very apparent that during difficult times, we can pull together. And although we might not always like what we're tasked to do, we can come up with the best possible way to approach difficult situations to the best of our ability. And sometimes that's all we can do. It's not the first time that we've had to do that and it certainly won't be the last. But I know that I'm very grateful for everyone's support throughout that entire process. But I wanted to give a special recognition to Sarah because it's a very difficult situation to walk into as a new building business director, so.
Thank you. It was fun. Can't wait for next year, Sarah. I agree. I agree. You want to buckle up for this one? Oh, boy. The business office has discovered just this afternoon that during the transition to an in-house payroll, there were some settings selected in the payroll module of the financial system which has caused duplicate charges to budget lines beginning in January. The biggest example of this is in the health insurance line, which has eight-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars of additional charges to it. The financial report in your packet shows a deficit of seven-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars in the health insurance line, when there's actually approximately a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars in that line. The duplicate charges appear in the financial system and create a deficit in the report, but they're not actually real charges. So what we discovered is happening is that when the payroll gets posted into the financial system, for example, there's a five-thousand-dollar payment from Silver Lake to Mayflower. from Silver Lake to Mayflower Municipal Health for a certain Blue Cross program that staff have selected. And so, that $5,000 is being subtracted out along with all the other amounts. And then, when the bill from Mayflower Municipal Health comes in for $268,000, we are actually paying that bill and a check for that amount is going. So there's real payments that have been made and there are these little ghost payments that we've been creating since January. So this issue is potentially affecting all lines connected to payroll. So the next steps for the Business Office is to correct the settings in the payroll module and then we have to go back and remove all the duplicate charges. Fortunately, we already have a training scheduled for tomorrow morning with the trainers for our software program. So we're gonna be getting to work on this first thing in the morning. As soon as I have a corrected financial report for you, I will send it out to the entire committee. So this is good news and bad news. The bad news is there's an awful lot of work to be done. The good news is there's more money than the report says there is. Okay, I'm going to ask a question dovetailing off of that. Does that slightly inflate our budget for next year? Okay. Unfortunately. Yeah, you break my mind. I'm sorry.
These are plans that we have to correct in the next five weeks?
So it will be... It has to be corrected by June 30th. We wouldn't have a picture of what the end of the year looks like without fixing this.
Find enough money for the other door.
Yeah. Is that doable, Sarah? Do you feel comfortable that we can? I guess we have to, so. So we have to in this. I spoke to Dave Turcot about this. We have a consultant that we have worked with that is an expert in the program, School ERP Pro that we use. I have to be completely honest with you. Everybody in my office is busy doing their jobs all day, every day. And so, there's not really someone who can devote 20, 30 hours to this. And so, Dave had suggested that we contract with Nicole Wood, who has been a great assist. She's very adept at the computer program we use and she's been a great assistance to us in the past. And then you said you're implementing training to correct the situation. We happened to have training scheduled tomorrow with the, I don't know, the specialists that we also did the training with the payroll modules. We have training scheduled tomorrow for the end-of-the-year rollover. And so, I figured, seeing as we're meeting with this woman, that it would be best to open with this. The end-of-year rollover training is multiple days. So if we take several hours tomorrow to start sorting this out, it will put us behind the eight ball for June 30th. Okay. Any other questions, comments? So as soon as that corrected financial is available, if we could have it regardless of if we have a meeting that night or the next night, as soon as it's available, that would be great. Okay. I can email that out. The next thing on my report is grants. Can I ask a question? Sure. Do we want to, even though we don't have a... We don't want to vote it? Okay. Right. I think we did it once before. There wasn't a report, but we filmed it. Okay.
Not if she's gonna make an amended report to us.
Okay. The next thing on my report is the Perkins Equipment Program Improvement Grant. So this may be news, but we were supposed to vote to accept all federal grant funds. So Silver Lake was awarded $8,120 to the Perkins Equipment Program Development Grant, a federal award that required a school committee approval. My understanding is Mr. Glass applied for this grant for additional equipment for the allied health program.
I will make motion that we accept.
Was it all? The one he applied for today was all automated. This was...
Ignore me.
There's a lot of Perkins still on the line.
Not as much as I wish there was.
True.
Working on it.
I will make motion to accept the Perkins Equipment Grant for $8,120. Mark second.
Any further discussion? Good evening. All those are David.
Aye.
And the last part of my report is an update on the corrective action plan. There is no progress since my last update. So the audit cited that the Business Office is essentially understaffed and I don't think we'll be able to make significant progress on the corrective action plan. We all are understaffed. Go ahead, Mike.
The plan does include some reorganization and utilization of your staff in different roles, I would assume. When you get around to organize? Are you trying to add staff, but you're also trying to look at how the department is organized, I assume, in this study?
Yes. But the simple fact is that there are too many tasks for the people that we have at the moment. So we do, we have to do a corrective action plan, though.
Yes.
And we're saying we don't have the staff for it. Go ahead, Mike.
So you went and outsourced for the issue of the software. Just throw an idea that we should outsource for the organizational part of this. If you don't have time to do this, we should consider a consultant to look at your staff and how to utilize them. Or have to we need to hire somebody to be able to tell us how the department?
Well, I mean, that's certainly an idea. I don't know. I mean, Sarah's been here for just a handful of months and I think she'll get her arms around it. But I guess I'm struggling with we have to do a corrective action plan and we're saying that we don't have the staff to do it. So we, how do we augment that?
So I think in terms of competing priorities, Sarah has to prioritize what has to be done first. It's not as if we're unwilling to do it. It's just that we're unable to get to it because, as you know, we just went through three town meetings and budgets and all the things that go along with that. We'll have end-of-year closeout. We have the restructuring with the different contractual changes that will occur as a result of all that. We're a very complicated system and our auditor has also stated this. Getting temporary clerical help is a lot less expensive than paying someone to come in and make those... to look at us objectively. And there is a place for those types of audits and I'm not opposed to them, but I just want the school committee to know that paying someone to do that will, could be quite expensive. And the reality is that we recognize that there are two areas that have grown and are complicated over the past decade and that would be grants and transportation, particularly homeless transportation. Now, that's just from the people in the office who do everything we can to keep all the balls in the air and not drop any of them. So again...
Well, if I could give you an example, prior to my starting here, the decision was made to move the payroll in-house. So we went through that process and everything was going fairly smoothly. Part of what wasn't talked about really until maybe January was the payment of payroll taxes. So every two weeks, when we have a payroll, there's a payment that has to be made to the federal government and a payroll, a payment that needs to be made to the state. And our accountant, Barty, comes to work at 6 o'clock in the morning and stays till 4:00 or 5:00. You know, it's not something I could put... I felt comfortable giving to her. So I'm the person that pays the payroll taxes. That's great. I learned how to do it. I have a little sign in my office that says, "Everything is figure-outable." I figured it out. Our payroll taxes have been made. And then, guess what I had to figure out? I have to file quarterly tax reports. So again, something else I had to learn. They're just not somebody... Normally, this would be something the treasurer would do. Go ahead, Jason.
So we had some items we've already cleared up with Desi that they were asking us to fix. At this point, all they're asking us for is for additional staff. We can tell them to pound sand. And so, we have the financial capability, pound sand. What are you gonna do to us?
The corrective action plan was filed with the federal government. It was about our...
But what is the unresolved issue? Staffing?
The unresolved issue is that timelines weren't met.
And what do they want us to do to make up for that? Besides, we have already apologized and fixed and titled. What else do they want from us?
To not miss deadlines in the future.
Yeah. We can't do that while we're understaffed, so.
If it happens, if it happens, we'll do our best and we'll support you if that happens.
Agreed.
Pound sand. Maybe us.
They could withdraw the federal grants from us.
I would love to see them try.
Right.
Yep. It would, you said people losing jobs in Washington. It wouldn't be us. We're doing the best we can.
Who filed this with the federal government? Who initiated the requirement? Desi?
The auditors.
Oh, the auditors.
It was part of the audit. So there are three parts to the audit and it's the single audit of the federal grants that required the corrective action plan.
And that could vary financially, yes.
Mike.
District of this situation.
Needs to be a little clearer. Not yours.
Anything else, Sarah? That you need to put our gloves on or combat boots or whatever? That is my report for tonight. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Assistant Superintendent is not here tonight.
He's not here tonight and he apologized and cannot be here this evening. But he will have a report for you in at our gym meeting.
Okay.
And that leads us to you.
Sure. So I just want to publicly thank the communities of Halifax, East Newton, Clinton and school committee members, as well as school staff and school leadership, district leadership for their support of the FY25 budget. We appreciate your advocacy on behalf of all of our students. The other thing that I want to mention is that search committees are underway. In some cases, contract negotiations have begun for several key positions in our schools, but only one we are able to announce this evening and that is our Assistant Special Education Director. So I'm going to pull up my information because my screen timed out. I'm sorry. I don't want to mispronounce your name. Elizabeth McKay is our new Assistant Director of Student Services. She has accepted the position of Assistant Director of Student Services as of July 1st, 2024 for the Silver Lake Regional School District. Elizabeth is an experienced school psychologist and special education administrator. Currently, she is the department head at Sandwich High School, Sandwich Public Schools. Prior to that, Elizabeth was the department head of Special Education at Oak Ridge School and Sandwich Public Schools. Her special education experience at the elementary and high school level will be an asset to the district. Before moving to southeastern Massachusetts, Elizabeth worked for Burlington Public Schools as a team chair and audit district coordinator, as well as a school psychologist. So I want to thank Chris and her team in the search committee for interviewing candidates, conducting an effective search, identifying, and also Dave for his assistance with not only this, but all of our search processes. So it's been a busy spring underway. We have a pre-K principal candidate that Dave's now working with that I'm not able to announce this evening. An athletic director finalist that Dave is working with as well. And an HR director who I believe we may have finalized some terms today. And I also want to publicly thank Dave for his service these past two years. He's made an enormous impact. We're gonna miss him. These are big shoes to fill. He's cleaned up a lot of our practices and made us better for it. He's been an enormous support for staff and we're gonna miss him.
Thanks so much. Absolutely. You, negotiations, the whole process was a lot smoother with you augmenting the teams. I really appreciate everything you've done and you're a pleasure to work with. And in the negotiations, when it got really tough and you'd say something that you didn't even mean to be humorous and it just lightened the mood. So I really, I've enjoyed working with you so much. I wish you so much luck.
Well, thank you very much, Leah. It's my pleasure. You all too. Thank you.
That's all you have. Okay.
I also want to thank Gordon Laws for his participation on the HR, on the athletic director process. So I'm sorry, I forgot.
All righty. Nothing under new business, nothing under old. Special committee reports. Let's start with SLEA.
You're stuck with me tonight.
You're stuck with me tonight. John decided to prioritize his newborn child over Olive.
That's exciting.
Olive Winnie?
Olive Winn.
Olive Winn.
Lay.
Outlay. She's four pounds, four ounces and four days now.
Oh, wow. Is this his first?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, that's wonderful.
How big was she?
Four pounds, four ounces. She's getting a little early. Glad everybody's doing well.
Yeah, everybody.
Rachel wants to go to the art show tonight. We'll be told her now. Sorry.
I'm just, there's a lot of us here and it sounds like only one person, so I don't know what to think of that. I don't have a lot of updates for you all. Like we said, it was great that our budgets all got passed. This meeting has not disappointed as our last real one of the year between finding literal bags of money and taking on the federal government. It's been a pleasure to be here. It's the seniors' last day tomorrow, which came up. For, for some of them, we're really excited to see where they go and for the rest, we're just excited that they're going.
The record, we love them all.
Yeah. I would say that to their faces and stuff.
I want you to go away angry. I want you to go away.
I am happy I just like those for tomorrow, just in case.
I also really appreciated, Gordon, your questions about the common assessments and the data. Don't feel bad about asking those questions. Those are definitely all the sorts of things that we've talked about in our meetings as well. The middle school's a little bit like your, high school teachers get 50 minutes of non-student time per day and like two hours to work with their departments per month. So, we haven't had nearly as much time to crunch the numbers, but I know there's lots of experts in both buildings who would love to do that if they had the time. So, it's great to hear you all focusing on that sort of stuff.
Thank you. Thank you. Administrator, did you?
I was contacted by the current chair of that review to try and schedule with the superintendent the time in June for the mid-cycle formative evaluation conversation.
Okey-dokey. CTE?
No update.
Okay. Chairman's report, I have no correspondence you folks don't know about. Legislative agents' report.
I apologize before I launch into this, and I would also like to thank my boss for the exorbitant amount of time he has allowed me to put into advocating for all of the school districts in Massachusetts, but specifically the schools of our three towns in the region. Also like to, to thank my children for understanding why I have been not around and thank my wife for putting up with me. So, I think that's really important. I've been spending a lot of time on Beacon Hill and in conversations with reps and senators. Most recently, we had Dan Hill for MASC. I'd like to thank Mark for coming up and implying the flag for Silver Lake.
That was a lot of fun.
Also like to thank Christine, who is Rep. Lannatra's Chief of Staff, for, for coming for the second year in a row and sent a full presentation and then walking back to the State House with us. We had three keynote speakers. The House Education Committee Chair, Rep. Garlick was there. The Vice Chair of Education Committee, Steve Ultrino was there and Commissioner of Education was there and they all delivered wonderful remarks at the presentation. The House budget actually came through for us quite a bit. Many of you may know that Rep. Lannatra is sitting on the House Ways and Means Committee now, which is an extremely powerful position. She heard our cry for help and helped maneuver the historic high $104 per pupil minimum increment into the House budget. The governor had set it at $30. So, this was a significant change in the per pupil minimum increment. This especially helped the town of Halifax see dollars come into their budget as they're a health harmless community. This was important. The only way is to actually get more state funds into their coffers. Very, very thankful for that move. Rep. Lannatra actually also came through for the Silver Lake Regional School in a very specific way. She did manage to get an earmark in for the Silver Lake Regional School Performing Arts, specifically for ADA riders for the middle school and some funds to also help encourage on the stage at the high school as well. So, I had previously said, "Don't count on it this year," but, but Kathy came through for us, big time on our... So, we're now onto the Senate budget. They're actually beginning to debate with the full Senate on Monday of next week, but we have really good friends up there and I'd like to thank Senator Bruce Tar. He is the Senate Minority Leader. He's also the MASC legislator of the year. And you're about to hear why. Every time I contact Senator Tar or a member of his staff and ask them for an amendment, it gets filed like that. So, he has quite a few amendments that are going to be debated starting on Monday. One is an amendment to fully fund regional transportation at 100%. He also put an amendment in to try and get the per pupil minimum up to $125 per student. And in addition to that, he did file legislation and amendment to get the inflation index from 1.35, that was in the governor's proposal and the House version of the budget, up to the 4.5% with provisions for catch-up years coming in the future. So, I can't say enough about Senator Tar's cooperation and getting those specific amendments put in that will directly help Silver Lake, but also students across the state. We did manage to get, this one shocked me, in, in the budget itself and the Ways and Means Proposal, Circuit Breaker fully funded at 75% for tuition and transportation. So, MASC was the organization calling for that and the Senate listened and it's in the budget already. So, just using FY24 numbers, because I don't know how much we've spent collectively as a district for all of our schools. Last year, Halifax, Kingston and Clinton had $1,300,000 worth of eligible transportation costs. We were reimbursed by the state during this year at 57%. So, we were able to bring back about $746,000 to our three local school committees. If we had the same exact numbers for next year, we know we had higher transportation costs this year, if it was the same exact number, we would have received close to $1 million in reimbursement from the state. That would be $200,000 more than we got this year. So, between the per pupil minimum increment going up to $104, that changed our preliminary cherry sheet for the Senate Ways and Means and the House version of the budget, just for Silver Lake alone, by $176,000 over the governor's budget. Good news there is, that will help us start to replace the $750,000 that we took from E and D. Before we even lift the finger and we have to come to difficult decisions next year, we'll be about $600,000 that we're going to have to figure out how to replace in E and D over the course of the next year or two. Okay? There's an amendment that was filed that I fell out of my seat when I saw this. This was by Senator O'Connor. It's Amendment 705, if anybody wants to go home and see if it's real, because I can't even believe it's real. This amendment would bring Circuit Breaker to 100% for transportation and tuition over the next four years. It's a long shot, but putting that language there and putting people on notice that there is a need, a desperate need at the local level for help with our special ed costs and our transportation for special ed students is being heard at the highest levels of our state government. So, I'd really like to thank Rep. Lannatra for her, her help. I'd like to thank Senate President Karen Spilka for all the time that she is devoted to listening to me, advocating for our schools. Since she's been in the Senate, we've never had below 75% for special ed, Circuit Breaker reimbursement. But getting that 75% for the transportation is going to help all four of the school committees in our area. So, I'm very, very thankful for all of the work of the members of the House and the members of the Senate. They're trying to, to help us, they hear our desperate call.
Excellent. Wow. Jeanne first?
Thank you, Jason. I was really pleased to see your email. You have an update, so thank you. But on this note, Sarah, is there a vote that we need to take for the shelter reimbursement? More of a point of order, yes? For the Silver Lake reimbursement?
Completely forgot all about it. It's more money. I put, I just put that into the file, correct?
Yes.
Um, yes, Jeanne. Good catch, Jason.
Thank you. May I make a motion? This is great. May I make a motion that we accept the $66,500 for the second shelter plan?
Thank you. For Silver Lake?
One second.
Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good, good catching. And then, Mike, you had a point?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to thank Jason. Watching him work up there on Monday on Dan Hill, a couple weeks ago, was, and the polit, political folks that are involved in our education system from both the Mass Association School Committee and the legislators that we met and listened to. It's a big moving puzzle and the guy that made the press presentation was the guy sitting right over here. They had all the numbers at the tip of his fingers, very well organized without a cue card, and I was very impressed. I was very lucky to have him on our committee and I just want to extend our thanks that he's out there every single day trying to get all this money for the entire state. And it's not just self-serving for Silver Lake, but he does it for everybody and it should really go around the class. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for that. Negotiations, no meeting? PAC, we heard from Amy earlier? Policy?
No meeting.
Safer?
Yeah, well, we heard enough about safer, I think. Thank you very much for taking all my thunder, Sarah. Just walk a second. We don't have anything else. Thank you.
All right, treasurer's report? Yeah, we've nothing signed yet. Correct. So, the vendor invoices were due on May 9th and went out digitally as a single signature warrant last week. There were 20 warrants totaling $1,175,122.70. In our, in April, our meeting was also out of sync with the warrant schedule. We met on the 9th with the warrants due on the 11th. There were 24 warrants totaling $2,501,047. Union 31, no meetings? Single, single, signature warrant, you just elaborated on that? Alrighty. Dates to remember, May 27th Memorial Day, May 31st graduation, rain date of June 1st. June 6th, our first virtual meeting of June to reorg. June 14th, last day of school. June 19th, Juneteenth Day and July 11th is our closeout meeting with that June 25th one in the middle there. All right, folks. Well, motion to adjourn.
Point of order?
Point of order.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I may just be exhausted, but I'm feeling tremendously emotional tonight. Is this potentially your last evening as the Chair of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee?
It, it very well may be, yes. Having said that, I'm not going anywhere. You can't get rid of me. I, I have one more year on my term and I think it is prudent for me not to be Chair next year, if that was even the will of the committee. So, I feel I would be bitter used by the committee to sit back and support whoever becomes Chair and the rest of the committee. So, I'm not going anywhere, but I, I do believe the best action would be for me to not be. As well as my own philosophy on this role is, it should rotate. I think it's healthy for everybody involved to rotate it. So, it has been my pleasure to do it for so very long. I, I love being on this committee.
It's been my honor to be on the committee with you as a fellow member, but especially these past couple of years with you at the head of the table guiding us through these difficult times. And I don't think we would have ended up at the place we are right now with three towns supporting our budget, with not having to lay off a single member of our staff, keeping the family intact so we can, we can meet the next day and the next challenge. And Silver Lake Regional School is a better place because of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Paul.
Thank you. Again, I'm not going anywhere. I just believe I'm, I'm going to sit back and help row the boat. Thank you for that. So, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.